Let's get this meeting started. Thanks, everyone, for being here for our pre-meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Are there any questions by any commissioners about the agenda? All right, well, let's get started. The first item on our agenda is an update on the broadband provider issue, and Tim Love is going to take the lead on this.
Good deal. Good afternoon, everyone. You're not going to hear much from me today, but I will start this update by introducing you to a few folks who have been instrumental in the broadband initiative, and they're sitting here with me on the front row. So we've got Land of Sky, which includes Sarah Nichols, who you've met before on this topic, as well as Erica Anderson. But a new face to you today is Keith Conover, who's sitting beside Sarah. Keith works for the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, has gotten a lot better than he used to be when he was working for Verizon, but now works here and is supporting us trying to improve broadband in rural western North Carolina. So with that said, those are the introductions. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and Keith, who are going to walk you through the presentation.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your continued interest in this project. It's definitely something that Keith and I are very passionate about doing and seeing move forward in your community. And today is special because we get to talk about how we move from the planning phase into some action items. As a review, we've gone through, the West Engine effort is in its Phase II operation. As part of this, we participated in the community survey, which had about 2,600 responses countywide, and we've done a variety of asset mapping and accumulation, including community assets, vertical assets, et cetera. This checklist here brings us to where we're at now, which is the provider meeting, where we bring all of that data that we've put together and put that in front of our provider friends.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. Just in terms, and Tim was so nice to mention my Verizon past, I worked for AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Bell Atlantic for 27 years before moving here to Asheville nine years ago. So I am a citizen of Buncombe County, and I'm very passionate about this. I've been doing the state's work for seven years and have been responsible for bringing broadband new and improved to thousands of people. It is a market-driven, non-regulated entity, so that becomes difficult at times. This would be the 14th county that we've had a provider meeting in, so I've done 13 of these already. And I say that so that you know that the providers are pretty prepared on what to expect out of the meeting, and that we're not just trying something new in Buncombe County that we've never done before. Every meeting that we've had has resulted in deployments, and I'm quite proud of that. So having said that, the provider meeting really does two things. It allows for a checkmark on neutrality, which says that we invite all the providers, incumbent, as well as potential competitors, to the meeting. That's my job, is to do those invites and keep track of that. That is, so if there's ever a provider that comes and says, "We weren't invited," you can point them directly to me. Knocking on wood, I've got seven years with ever having that kind of request, so I promise you that that will be my commitment to you. So what that does is that allows you to say, "Everybody's been invited to the meeting." So now we can move forward and work with folks that really are interested in making changes in Buncombe County. The second item that's of importance is, as Sarah mentioned, sharing the demand information. And I will tell you, 2,600 responses is the largest of any county that I've done in the past. I'm not surprised by that, because Buncombe County represents a market that is very desirable. And that is something that we should definitely not forget about through these sessions with these providers. So those are the two benefits of having the provider meeting. What will happen at the provider meetings, and you can flip us to the next slide if you would like, my role is to facilitate that meeting. Typically, someone from the county will introduce themselves, thank everyone for attending, thank everyone for whatever deployment that they've done already, because, again, it's not a regulated business. We appreciate anything they've done to date. Our goal is to have them to do more in the future. Once that happens, I typically am introduced, and I take it from there. And again, these providers have been through this before. What we do is we present them with information that is on a thumb drive, that they will take with them from that meeting. And Sarah and I are in the process now of preparing that. What that includes, it includes the demand information, the addresses of the 2,600 folks that have responded. It includes a map with those addresses. It includes your vertical assets, where myself, Tim, Sarah, Vance, we all went out and looked at the towers and what would be available from a wireless perspective. And then a map also that includes those all together, which shows the demand versus the assets available, which is very valuable. Many of these providers do not have folks that do this kind of research for them. That's why we're here. We're here to try and show them that there is opportunities, especially in rural areas, where, you know, young people might be getting laptops at school, they go home, they don't have a connection, some telemedicine needs that might be out there as well. But what this allows them to do is to look at that. And then what I usually do at the end of that session, and typically these meetings, by the way, are not very long, because we've been through them several times, right? Typically, they last about a half an hour, because the real magic will happen once they take that information back to their related businesses and lay their network elements over that. But I do talk about funding. And when we talk about funding, we talk about USDA reconnect funds, which are federal funds that are available for broadband, and we have had some awards recently in western North Carolina. It's been almost a decade since we've had them, but we, this past year, we had them in Cherokee County for Blue Ridge Mountain EMC, and we've had them in neighboring Madison County for French Broad as well. So those were multimillion-dollar awards that happened. And in those cases, the providers have to be the applicants. So we, in our civic duty, are called upon to be kind of like cheerleaders, to say, "If you need any information, if you need demographic information, if you need the addresses, the vertical assets, that might help you go after those funds because it's voluntary, we would be glad to help you with that." And that's what we typically do in our organization, is work with folks that need that kind of help. And I got to give accolades to Sarah and Erica, because the Land of Sky cog rarely goes after funds for broadband and does not achieve their goal. So I, you know, I get the same thing with the Southwest Commission Council of Governments. I cover, just so you know, just west of Charlotte, all the way to Murphy. So that, you know, kind of covers, I think I run out of time, right? But that kind of covers what the provider meeting is. It's nothing new, but it is definitely a, it's a very important milestone to move from planning to deployment, which we have seen in many cases. I'll just be quick and tell you that I just had a deal last year with Western Carolina University, where they own their electric infrastructure, and we're going to sell it to Duke. If you want to Google that up, take a look. But at the end of the day, after asking them to hold off on that to try and solve the broadband needs, we ended up with 4,200 people with newer, better broadband at no cost to the taxpayer. So much like the Internet is a patchwork of smaller networks, the solutions in rural areas are a patchwork or are very different solutions, and it'd be my pleasure to help us find those.
So as we prepare for the provider meeting, as well as what else we might have going on, kind of on the planning side, we've been looking at the data that we collected from the community survey and identified some next steps in the community profiles, some of which will be reviewing the telecommunication ordinance over the next few months, and some priority projects, as well as Keith will work with the providers and what they do after. What we saw that was interesting, and we anticipated this on the front end, was that Buncombe County kind of has two situations. They have some very rural areas with a certain problem, and they have some urban areas with a different problem. You can see the purple circles on the outside represent the rural communities in clusters, where we have some identified either connectivity or access issues. But we also have a cluster that, right there in the center of the county, kind of saying the same thing. And so I dug a little deeper with the data. I queried it by zip code, a zip code in each of those areas. And not surprisingly, but I wanted to point it out, that what we have is in the rural areas, a much lower density, a much lower population density, with a much higher level of either insufficiency or access, exponentially. And so when you followed up with the question as to why we're seeing these things show up in the data, you can see that we've got, in Sandy Mush, about 55% of the population saying that they don't have an option for service at all. That's why they don't have connectivity in their home. Versus in the city of Asheville, 100%, and people could check more than one box, that's why there's more than 100% totals. But 100% people say that it's just too expensive. What that boils down to is either their cost of living is too high, or in the urban areas, they have more opportunities for some free Wi-Fi that makes it not need to be a priority to have in their home. What we did in the ARC grant this cycle is put in these three purple circles, went into an ARC grant that would put an additional Wi-Fi spot in these rural areas, so that they have some of the same opportunities that the urban areas to get some public access. It's not a solution, it's kind of a Band-Aid, but it gives the rural areas a little bit of an opportunity. So what we'll be doing next, hopefully with your support, is moving forward with the provider meeting and some of these other opportunities that we've identified in our community profile to, I don't even know, to move this forward. Do we have any questions?
I have one. When you do a Wi-Fi spot in the rural areas, how do you decide where it goes?
We, because ARC is through public funding, we'll do that in a public area. So the process, should we be funded for that, is we've put three community centers. It would be Lester Community Center, Ox Creek, and Broad River are those three community centers. Each of them have towers nearby, so what we would do is try to utilize the tower or someone else who wants to be a provider in that area, bid out the project to them, they'll respond to it, we'll have a competitive process that accounts for neutrality. And the grant also would put a public computer in there that the community centers have agreed to keep accessible to the, in general, hours.
Okay, thanks. Any final questions? Good deal. We appreciate y'all's time. Just wanted to update the board, as well as the public, on kind of next steps. In the next month, there will be a provider meeting that will be announced and hosted here. But if you have any questions, feel free to let us know.
Thank you so much for the update. This is a very important issue to many of our constituents, so we really appreciate the work that is going into this and being kept in the loop about those efforts. And please let us know if there's anything we can do to continue to be supportive. All right. Next up is Nate Pennington and Jillian Phillips, who are going to talk about some text amendments coming up.
I am going to talk about two proposed text amendments to the subdivision ordinance that will come before the board at their October, at your October 15 meeting. Two pretty simple text amendments. One is changes to our require, to when a traffic impact study is required for a subdivision. And the second one is a clarification to the special subdivision requirements, and then a slight revision to the family subdivision requirements.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry. You're fine, you're fine. Go ahead.
So just a little history about the traffic impact study requirements. In 2017, we added a requirement for traffic impact studies for subdivisions of 300 lots or more. A similar one was added, a similar requirement was added to the zoning ordinance, but at a lower density threshold than the subdivision ordinance. Then in 2018, you passed a revision to the zoning ordinance to require a traffic impact study for 75 units or more for a planned unit development. So the proposed amendment to the subdivision ordinance would change the requirement to 75, change the requirement for a traffic impact study for, to 75 lots or more to match it with the zoning ordinance, so we have consistency throughout our ordinances. And just to let you know, it's been reviewed by the Department of Transportation, and we actually sent it to the city of Asheville, because we do have some roads that serve property within the county that would be regulated by the county subdivision ordinance, but are served by city roads. And that has to do with the ETJ being dissolved. It created this sort of strange situation that we have there. The amendment, the amendment to the traffic impact study has been reviewed and discussed in a public hearing, has been held by the planning board, and they recommended approval to the board. So again, just more specifics on the requirements.
What was the vote on the?
It was unanimous.
Okay.
It would go from 300 lots to 75 lots, and we add it, we are adding a requirement that if the traffic impact study indicates that the level of service would be reduced to D or lower, that your driveway permit be submitted to NC DOT or City of Asheville, your driveway, your driveway permit be approved by NC DOT or City of Asheville prior to submitting for preliminary approval. Now, most subdivision developers, they submit for preliminary approval, once they get that preliminary approval from the planning board, they then go get their DOT driveway permit or approval from the city of Asheville. Questions about that? So just a graph.
Back up, back up. Slow down on that and tell me that again, on the driveway permit.
So currently...
What's happening now, and what is being proposed?
So currently, most developers do not submit for their DOT driveway permit, or if it's in the city of Asheville, or approval from city of Asheville, until after they've received preliminary approval from the planning board.
Why do they do it that way now?
I think just trying to get the process started, trying to get their approvals in place before they submit additional information to DOT or the city of Asheville.
Okay.
And so what this would do, is if you have a subdivision that's going to reduce level of service on a road, it would require you get that DOT driveway permit or city of Asheville approval prior to submitting to the planning board for preliminary approval. That way, if there are any recommendations regarding, you know, the DOT has any recommendations regarding turning lanes or decel lanes, those can be discussed with DOT prior to going to the Buncombe County Planning Board. And this is just a graphic that sort of shows you what level of service, the flow of traffic looks like. And as you can see, A, B, and C are pretty stable, but once you get to D, that's where traffic is affected, flow is affected by volume. And that's why we decided to start that requirement at level D or lower.
I did just also want to point out, too, that, you know, with the ETJ now gone, and that's two ETJs out of three in the state, two are in Buncombe County, it made it really difficult to sort of plan from a transportation perspective, when we have any number of scenarios where you have city roads that then go out into the county. One example, that's Old Haywood Road. Okay, so that's out in Canlar, it's actually maintained by the city of Asheville. So we're trying to maintain a way to coordinate with municipalities in a way that's going to not create a situation that's going to create a transportation issue that we haven't thought clearly through. We've got some fairly significant projects coming, and some fairly significant projects that have already come through. After all, we're still in development boom. And we've also done something that, it's a little bit of out of the box, but we think it'll help as we continue to take projects to our Board of Adjustment. We want to set them up for success. So what we've done, and what the DOT has agreed to, is they're now attending our technical review committee meetings. What the technical review committee meeting is, is it's all your, it's all your subject matter experts, all your people involved with development review, whether it be erosion control, stormwater, transportation, permits and inspections, they all sit at a table, and they look at a project, and they identify any concerns that may take place. And what that does is it allows us to forward on to the Board of Adjustment, because they review projects through the conditional use permit process, it sets them up to better look at a project and say, "Hey, I kind of want to approve this, but I'd like to feel better about any sort of conditions that we might want to consider as part of our approval." After all, it's a conditional use permit process. So what that does is it allows us to go ahead and have that conversation with the NC DOT, with the city of Asheville, with an affected municipality, so that we can plan out what sort of mitigating conditions need to be looked at. And this is just one way to sort of help close that loop. By the way, when you all did consider the zoning ordinance change of 75 units, that was proved unanimously by the commissioners at that time. I just wanted to add that, because it does play, while level, level of service D is an extreme example and seen in more urban areas, it does sometimes happen. And that way, we are able to work with the DOT so that they can tell us ahead of the curb and ahead of the game what they're going to require, whether that be a decel lane, a turn lane, a light, we know right from the get-go what we might need to plan for.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, make sure we're not painting the entire county with an ETJ brush. We keep bringing up the ETJ and all the issues, we run into that, you know, and because when you get out beyond what used to be the ETJ, it's different when you're doing a subdivision. You know, I just want to make sure that we're, but the level of service, you know, being D, that should...
It's going to be your more urban.
Yeah, that, I mean, that might calm my concerns on some of it, so.
So it's basically a twofold. One is to bring it into consistency with the zoning ordinance, but secondly, in those extreme circumstances, and we've got a couple of projects that are going to be coming forward that are in sort of like, you know, the ETJ, there's no clear line. In some areas, it looks like, well, in a sense, it's almost a blob in some areas as to how it sort of snakes up in the city and comes back out. So we're just trying to find a way to, a moderate approach to traffic planning.
Any further questions about the traffic impact study requirement? So the second change is to our special and family subdivisions. Special subdivisions are three lots or less. They require fire marshal's approval for private access, so that's a private road or a private shared driveway, but beyond that, there aren't many additional requirements. And then family subdivisions, we allow up to a five-lot subdivision right now for the specific purpose of transferring property to a relative. So for special subdivision, we're clarifying a requirement of the special subdivision requirements that say that if you subdivide, if you have a three-lot subdivision, if you subdivide additionally, so say you take one of those three lots and subdivide it into another three lots, within a three-year period, then it, that subdivision is considered a minor subdivision. And we have that in there is because what we were having developers do is create a special subdivision, creating three separate LLCs or transferring it into three separate people's names, and then additionally doing three additional special subdivisions. So you had a nine-lot subdivision that was never reviewed for road infrastructure or for, through the stormwater and erosion process. So again, we have that requirement of the three-year time period for special subdivisions, and we are just clarifying, because we've had lots of questions from surveyors, that if you have a two-lot subdivision and you want to come in within that three-year period and subdivide out an additional lot, you do not have to meet those requirements for a minor subdivision. I always say you get three lots for free. Once you hit four, you have to start constructing some infrastructure. Any questions about that?
No, that is crystal clear.
So family subdivisions, what we are having occurring as the language is writing now, written now, is, again, developers were coming in, doing a five-lot special, family subdivision, and on top of that, doing a three-lot special subdivision. So you had an eight-lot subdivision that was then being developed without going through the subdivision review process. So that includes our infrastructure. If they go through the minor subdivision process, it helps our stormwater administrator and erosion control administrator make sure they're meeting those ordinances. Minor subdivisions are subject to our hillside development requirements. So what was happening was developers were using it as a way around the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, as far as infrastructure and hillside development and so on. So what we're proposing, we really would like to keep it in place for the people who are using it for the purpose of transferring property to family members. But what we're proposing is we limit it to five lots, and three out of those five lots may be for sale. So you could have five lots that were completely going to family members, or you could have three lots that were going to family members and two for sale, or one for sale, whatever combination. But the specific standard is you can't have more than five lots. Any questions about that one? And those are the two proposed subdivision ordinance requirements.
All right, anything else, Nate? You guys good? All right. Next up is the Affordable Housing Committee funding recommendations. We actually just came from that meeting, and we did not make the recommendations yet. We're going to require one more meeting to think some of those issues through. So I think our update is that, there's no update yet.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to go ahead and start the slideshow. What I'm going to do is sort of do an abbreviated version, and we're going to update you, because there was some questions in previous meetings regarding FY 2019 in terms of our emergency repair. And in front of you, you should now have a Manilah folder that you can take with you and read through a summary of those items. And then I'm just going to go over a quick slide that shows you where you can find those online. And so this will be fairly quick, because like Chair Newman said, we did just come from an Affordable Housing Committee, and I'll just briefly update you on that process. So again, FY 2019, we call us the funding wheel that we have. It's the categories that we look at in terms of the Buncombe County Affordable Housing Services Program. We try to do a little bit of everything. We have emergency repair, we offer low-interest construction loans, there's also components for tenant-based rental assistance, employee housing, a permit fee rebate program, and a down payment assistance program. And again, this just sort of gives you the highlights that's included in your Manilah folder, and I will show the public here in just a second where they can find this online. But just in summary here, this gives you a brief synopsis of what we touched on in the 2019 program. $240,000 allocation to Ashfire Habitat for Humanity. This project is currently under construction. They had to do a lot of heavy infrastructure on the project. I actually spoke to Andy earlier, I was asking him about concrete curbs, which is a fascinating subject. He told me they're well under construction with stand-up curb. Eventually, in the Phase 1, it'll support 24 units for sale homeownership. The second one just indicates how things can change in the real world. We have money that's returned to the program. On this one in particular, this was a victim of Amboy Road, I-26 and 240 realignment, and the contractor and developer basically told us that he will not be able to move forward with that particular project as it stands. We have two providers of emergency repair in the county. That's Mountain Housing Opportunities and Habitat for Humanity. This just sort of indicates how they have provided emergency repair and the number of units, and what they will do coming up. And that's just based on the timeline. They hope to have all these completed within one year. Clarification on the last one, we do have a small amount that's allocated to Employee Housing Assistance Program. There was a 19 request or two for this, but what happens is, it's a small amount, it's a multi-year fund, it's moved forward if we don't use it. I think the idea there is that we don't always ask for new money to recharge if we have funds available, so that's the reason that's indicated as such. This is, this is an interest... This is, uh, this is an interesting graphic that our department creates. It's a scatter map, shows you across the county of where we're making an impact in terms of emergency repair. As you can see from the map, it's all over the place. This is also where you will find documents available that you can go to our website and click on everything that you have included in your manila folder, and it includes the following reports in detail. Now, the interesting part, and what I have to update you on, we just came from the Affordable Housing Committee. Let's keep in mind, this is a new committee for this year. Uh, we're still trying to find our way. Uh, we had a very robust conversation. Um, we're reviewing applications this year. I can tell you in reports so far, we received eight, six of which were, uh, were deemed complete. And then what we're trying to decide is, well, every year, there's, um, uh, an amount of money that's requested, but only a certain amount of money that's allotted. So we're trying to find the best way to complete that funding wheel and make an impact in sort of all these categories and components. What the committee landed upon is originally, we had, uh, proposed to come to you guys to the full commission on October fifteenth. The committee would like a little bit more time to study the, uh, applications. We're gonna meet sometime in the first week in November, and then likely come to the commission for a full vote, uh, either the first meeting or the second meeting in November. And this just sort of indicates what our budgeted, uh, budget is. Program income is money that comes back into the program with loans and interest, and then the returned, uh, funds is, uh, basically what would happen if a project doesn't move forward or some other kind of information comes to light. All that equates to one million, uh, eighty thousand, seven hundred and seven, and we've already received an amount of money that is in excess of that amount. And again, just to rehash, we'll come back to you at either the first or the second meeting in November for a vote on those, uh, specific applications. And that concludes my presentation on update to the commissioners.
Great. Thank you, Nate. To be continued. Um, all right, next up, um, we have, um, the County IVC Transportation Agreement.
Good afternoon. Rachel Nygaard, Strategic Partnerships Director, and here with Chief Deputy Eberhart from the Sheriff's Office. We are here to talk with you about IVC, which is involuntary commitment transportation agreement for Buncombe County. The reason that we're before you is that there is a new piece of legislation, which has been passed by the General Assembly for North Carolina pertaining to laws surrounding IVC, or the involuntary commitment, and the delivery of behavioral health services. So one of the reasons that I'm introducing the topic is that our behavioral health partnerships for Buncombe County are nested within the Strategic Partnerships Department, but of course, um, the law enforcement organizations have a critical role in a lot of assets of the crisis response, including transportation. And these laws pertain to a number of aspects, including transportation. So the requirement essentially says that these local entities, the care entities, including behavioral health as well as hospital, and the law enforcement organizations, will collaborate in developing a transportation agreement, which will codify or put into writing and formalize the plans as to how a person will move, um, through the various steps as they're physically taken into custody at the time of issuing an involuntary, an order for involuntary evaluation and commitment. The thing that kicked us all off is that the original due date in this legislation, which was passed about a year ago, late 2018, there was an original ask for counties to submit their transportation agreements to the state by January of 2019. Um, as you can see, our planning really kicked off in June, about six months later. That was in line with where most of the counties across the state were, and the primary reason for that is the transportation plan is falling under this larger umbrella of a crisis services response plan via Health, the local management entity, LME, MCO, the Managed Care Organization for Behavioral Health, Substance Abuse Services, and Developmental Disabilities. Vaya is our main coordinating organization, so they have been convening partners around IVC crisis planning, which pertains to services and treatment, in addition to, so the evaluations and treatment within that services umbrella, in addition to the transportation pieces, which the Sheriff's Office, um, which Chief Deputy will speak with us about in a minute. Um, so throughout the summer and it, as we approached August, we've been working on that larger cr-, uh, crisis services plan, um, and as a subset of that, working on a, uh, MOA, so a memorandum of understanding or agreement between the different entities that you'll see in a minute related to how people are transported from one phase or one location to another throughout the involuntary commitment process. And I'll let, um, Eberhart cover some of the specifics of the plan, then I'll come back and talk about next steps.
Uh, good afternoon. Don Eberhart, Buncombe County Sheriff's Office. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present. A portion of, of the, uh, transportation agreement is a memorandum between the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office and all of the other local law enforcement agencies within the county. Uh, previously, state regulations kind of had the oversight on how, um, consumers that had IVC papers issued against them would be, uh, identified, located, uh, taken into custody, and transported to an evaluation site. Under the new, uh, policy draft, uh, that has been pushed down to a, a local county area, uh, Buncombe County Sheriff's Office or any sheriff's office in the state, uh, in essence, serves as the lead. So we've met with all of the, the, the local, um, uh, law enforcement agencies in the county. We've produced a draft for them. They are giving some feedback, spoke with, uh, the Chief of Montreat PD this morning, and we're gonna try and have a quick meeting for one final revision on that. Um, and again, this includes the needs for transportation after the magistrate issues the involuntary commitment, uh, after the initial evaluation, and whether or not further treatment is needed. Uh, Buncombe County Sheriff's Office is responsible for transporting consumers that need mental health, uh, advanced mental health treatment throughout the state. Uh, from here to Raleigh, from here to Greensboro, uh, that falls on, on, on the local sheriff's Uh, the other, uh, local agencies that are participating in this, AB Tech Campus Police, Asheville PD, Bulmore Forest Police Department, Black Mountain Police Department, Montreat Police Department, North Carolina Arboretum, Weaverville Police Department, Woodfin Police Department, and UNCA, uh, Campus Police. And again, the overall transport plan is not gonna deviate from what state statute has, had previously had us operating under.
So fairly straightforward. Um, where it had previously been optional for counties to have a, a written agreement in place, it's now required, so we're going through the steps of making sure that that agreement fully captures all of the current practices and anything anticipated. We will be bringing that agreement forward for your regular agenda on October fifteenth. That means the agreement is being, um, like he mentioned, final, uh, final reviews this week, and it gets published to your packet and posted online by the ninth, a week in advance of your, uh, regular meeting, um, provided that gets the approval. Um, we authorize that to be signed, and I mentioned Vaya Health, working with local counties. They've got twenty-two different counties throughout the region that they're coordinating with on behalf of the state as we put these, um, final plans in place. Ten out of those twenty-two have completed it, and the others are mostly on the Board of Commission agenda, so you're in good company with other, um, counties here in the western part of the state, um, for the months of October and November to finalize those. Um, and once completed, we'll submit, um, to all of the places required by the, um, the law, which are listed on the screen in front of you, or were a second ago. Do you have any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both very much for the, uh, the presentation and information. All right, uh, next item, the AB Tech Capital Projects Recommendation, and, um, thank you for teeing us off.
Sure.
Don and Matt.
Yeah, I'm going to, uh, start off with, uh, some background on the MOU that was originated, and then Matt's gonna follow up with project information, and then Dirk is here from AB Tech, in case you all have any specific questions about the projects or anything like that. So, start the presentation.
All right. So, as you all recall, at the March ninth, 2019 Board of Commissioner meetings, we, uh, we, not we, you, uh, approved an MOU with AB Tech. And the basis of the MOU was to make sure that we were all in agreement on how we would use the Article forty-six monies. Uh, we're gonna, we're not gonna transfer more than five million dollars to cover operating. We're gonna start with the twenty-five million that we had in deferred, um, maintenance, and we're gonna build on that every year, and so at the end of eight years, we'll have a total of thirty million dollars that we will have spent on all the projects that they have. We're also gonna make sure that those funds never fall below the two million dollars that we're gonna set as the fund balance level. Now, one of the biggest things that came out of this is the Joint Capital Advisory Committee. So per the MOU, um, it's gonna function similar to the School Capital Commission, where we have two appointees from the board here, which is Commissioner Beach Farah and then Commissioner Whiteside, and then we have two from AB Tech. We have, uh, trustee Roger Metcalf and Matt Kern, and then we have one-at-large, which was appointed, um, at the first meeting, I believe, when they set the bylaws. Is that correct? Was it the second meeting? It was the first meeting. Um, and he's the at-large member. So they've had two meetings so far, and then at this last meeting, they talked about projects and that sort of thing, and then Matt's gonna give you a kind of some detail on the projects, unless you have any questions about the MOU, which I doubt you do.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Good to see you. Uh, we have met twice. At the initial meeting on August twenty-first, Dirk and his team brought two-point-four million dollars with the projects to the table. The biggest one being an INCA campus bundle of projects, with the biggest of that being new roofs at the TCC Center. Another was a master plan for a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. It's good to note that AB Tech has done, uh, master plan study before, however, that was at the Victoria Campus only. So this would be for the INCA Campus. And then some, uh, first-year programmatic capital investments slated at seventy-five thousand dollars. And if you have any questions on any of these projects, Dirk's probably your best bet. Oops, sorry. And, uh, also forty thousand dollars in emergency projects, which at this point sounds like contingency, um, and this also sounds like it's gonna be a minimum of forty thousand dollars, so perhaps could exceed forty thousand dollars, but right now, we've slated in forty thousand dollars. And, uh, five hundred thousand dollars in energy conservation measures, which at this point is solely LED replacement, which is a quick payback. Um, a study was done by the Waste Reduction Partners, and they said that we could save, or AB Tech could save eighty-five-ish thousand dollars by replacing their LED bulbs. Any questions on these projects?
You might, you might explain where the TCC building is actually on the campus.
Sure.
Just so people would know.
Of course, I don't have a map, but our INCA campus is approximately forty-one acres at the corner of Sand Hill Road and, uh, Smoky Parkway, and the core building that you see from Smoky Mountain Parkway is the large building there, a hundred-and-sixty-thousand square feet, and it's the one you see from the road. The taller tower, which we call the old Haynes Tower, is in the back of the property, and you don't see it as much from the road. Is that, is that your answer to your question, sir?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want, I know where it's at. I just wanna make sure everybody was familiar with it.
Any other questions?
Um, I have one question. Um, the, or maybe a couple. So the, uh, the emergency projects, um, it says, the bullet points say, you know, contingency and so, anyway, could you just maybe share a few more words about what's, what's in this bucket?
Yes. Well, uh, when we, uh, submitted our budget application this year, we, we'd asked for somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or seven or eight-hundred thousand dollars more, and you, you under-awarded us, which meant that we had to make some cuts, but then you did supplement and come back, and we identified some cuts as well. And part of the cuts were the, what we would call a contingency for unexpected, um, replacements, repair and replacements. So the case in point that I cite is back in early, uh, August, when it was ninety degrees every day, we had four air conditioning units, uh, some of which are scheduled to be replaced at some point under the capital repair and replacement plan, that were not operational. So they were emergency, emergency, uh, repairs that were not budgeted at this point. And so my anticipation is that, in the spirit of the MOU, we would use those funds to underwrite those expenses as we experience them.
So it's, so it's for, um, basically if equipment has a failure, you wanna have funding there to replace it. It's not for replacing equipment that's already...
No.
It's, uh, but it's just sort of in anticipation of, hey, things break, we need to be able to fix things when they break, and we'd like to have a little bit of funding earmarked for those types of relatively small projects.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, one other question, and I just, you know, this comes to my, just 'cause we funded a similar project with the city and county schools. So on the LED project, it sounds great, you know, Duke was, uh, and when we did the city and county school project, there was a pretty nice rebate that the project qualified for as well. Is that still out there?
I'm not sure if the rebate is out there in the same form that it was at that time. Part of the problem for the college is that we were not participating in the rate schedule that would anticipate the fact that we could get those rebates. So most, all of our buildings on campus are paying at the lower rate because we don't...
Oh, right. You have to participate in that Duke, uh, Energy Management Program in order to qualify for their incentives, right?
That's correct.
And, and AB Tech doesn't do that.
That's right.
Okay, understood. Thanks. I just thought I would ask, since I know that was a part of the mix on the other project we did. Those are my only questions for now. Other questions? So the, the, uh, just in terms of the process, so the Capital Committee's already reviewed this and supports the recommendations, and then the AB Tech Board of Trustees will take it up on the next week. And then do we, so we're being sort of briefed on this, but we're not voting, and so then we'll finally vote on the fifteenth.
Once the, yeah, trustees...
Okay, on our October fifteenth meeting. Okay, great. Um, I guess my only other question, um, and this probably goes back to Dirk, so, so part of the funding will be for this sort of planning process for the INCA campus, is that, is that right?
That is correct.
And is that, is that a, um, is that about looking at the physical structures, you know, the buildings on the campus for, you know, what are their, what are the future needs? I mean, the roof is being part of, is part of this project, just sort of the, the maintenance plans for the existing building, is it, or is it also about programming? Is it about programming and kind of taking care of the physical structures, or both? Or could you just say a few more words about that?
Right. It's all of that. For, for way too long, we've ignored the INCA Campus, so we received it as a gift in two thousand, and, uh, it's still sitting there pretty much unchanged, other than some modifications that were made early on. And so we, and we have a lot of deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed out there. So we would like to have a facilities assessment like the one that we, you conducted on our behalf this past couple of years to identify exactly, in the one building that we intend to keep, and that is the TCC building, we would ultimately assume that we would sell off perhaps the rest of that facility in the Haynes Building. So we're really only focused about the TCC building. It's a hundred-and-sixty square feet of facility, and we're only utilizing about ninety thousand square feet of that. So part of our desire is we, we try to continue to expand our services to our residents would be to expand in some of those unoccupied areas. In fact, if we could get to a core, at full-time equivalent enrollment of more than three-hundred students out there, as we have at Woodfin, we would receive a supplemental grant from the state to help operate the overhaud, overhead costs related to operating that facility. So our goal would be to actually increase, and this would help offset the demand for more space, uh, at the Victoria Campus as well. So there's two components. There's facility assessment, excuse me, and then there's a programmatic, uh, assessment and plan, master plan, that would include our stakeholders and those that would have an interest either in terms of current tenants, prospective tenants, uh, people in the community as to how we would use, better utilize those facilities moving forward. as to how we would use, better utilize those facilities moving forward.
Great answer. Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you all for the updates. Anything else we need to know on this item before we move on?
There should be a cash flow in the back of the presentation that was presented to AB Tech, just so you can see the funding.
Okay.
If you have any questions, reach out. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right. Next up, Rachel is back to tell us about the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Grant and related items.
Hello again. I'm here to introduce another item that will be on your regular agenda for October fifteenth. So this is a preview of a request for additional positions, and they're related to the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant, which the board has accepted and heard various updates on in the past. As a reminder, this grant is focused on jail population reduction. This is a support that comes from the John D. and Catherine T. MacArthur Foundation, so private foundation money that comes directly to Buncombe County Government for system work within criminal justice to address the drivers of jail population. And the total grant award was one point seven five million dollars over a two-year period. This work is being driven by the Justice Resource Advisory Council, which is the planning body for our criminal justice collaboration efforts. And that council identified seven strategies to work on within the grant, which are listed here, with four primary strategies and three underlying strategies or foundational strategies. The positions that we're going to talk about in a minute are, will assist with addressing Strategy One, which is deflection at arrests and booking, and Strategy Three, which is enhancing pretrial services. But all of the work that we do, as you can see with those foundational strategies, are undergirded by a focus on data utilization, a focus on racial equity, and a focus on community engagement. These positions will be within Pretrial Services, which is a division within the Strategic Partnerships Department. As a reminder of the work that Pretrial Services does, there are two main functions, which include risk assessments and pretrial supervision. The risk assessments that they conduct now are for those people who have been booked into the detention facility. They gather that information about the risk of those individuals, and that information goes to judicial officials to help inform decision-making about bond and whether or not they can safely wait in the community, and their risk for committing additional crimes, or a risk for not appearing, failing to appear for court. Pretrial Services also conducts supervised release. So judicial officials, judges might order, pretrial supervision is a condition of release, and there are different levels depending on risk, from administrative up to high risk. So everything from a weekly check-in by phone, all the way up to electronic monitoring, a range of different accountability measures to help keep a connection between somebody who's waiting for disposition of their criminal, this defendant waiting for their disposition, and when it's time for that to be completed. And that division currently has fourteen positions. One of them is already a Safety and Justice Challenge Grant-funded position that was previously approved. This particular request that will come before you in a couple of weeks is to ask for positions to help with a new function, which is to conduct those, those risk assessments. We're going to be using a new tool called the PSA, or Public Safety Assessment, that our local partners are working on the implementation plan for. They will conduct that risk assessment at a different phase in the criminal justice process, so a little earlier, at the magistrate level, at that pre-booking phase, rather than for the first time after somebody has already been booked, between their booking and their first appearance. So moving it up earlier in the process requires a twenty-four-seven presence in order to assist those magistrates, who are judicial officials, in making those initial determinations. And this particular strategy addresses one of the things that we saw when we assessed our local jail population, around the very high number of people that come in to our detention facility and stay for short periods of time. We think more information at an earlier stage in the process might help that. So these positions that we are requesting, the Board of Commissioners need to approve the creation of these positions in order for us to move forward. There will be four full-time and two part-time in order to achieve that twenty-four-seven coverage and have fill-in for when people are away. These would be pretrial screeners that are one hundred percent funded by the grant, and time limited for the life of grant and abolished after the end of the grant. We post a lot of information on a regular basis about the grant, including the workgroups and the strategies and the activities and budget online. So if any commissioner or member of the public is interested in keeping up with that information, the website is buncombecounty.org/sjc.
All right. Very good. Are there any questions?
Rachel, are we posting these positions as permanent or as temporary positions since what, the grant is only paying for two years?
The, I used the term "time limited" because these positions don't exactly fit the definition per our personnel ordinance of a temporary position because of the full benefits that they're offered. So we passed the, the Board of Commissioners adopted earlier this year, I think it was April, a grant-funded position policy. They would be consistent with the guidelines in that policy. Time limited to end at the end of the, when the grant goes away, the positions would go away. But they're not technically classified as temporary if you were to look at the designation in the HR system.
Good. Thanks.
So they automatically go away? When they're hired, the people that are hired know these positions are going away?
They do, and it will be a part of what they consent to when they come on, and we would add a date into Workday, which is our software, to make sure that that happens on time.
Thanks.
And do we, do we have a policy that, you know, if we have grant funding for some positions, that they, as in this case, they are, you know, limited to the length of time that we have the grants? Or is it just kind of on a case-by-case basis? In some cases, there might be an expectation that the positions continue, you know, indefinitely. In this, you know, in other cases, there's a conscious decision made that, you know, basically, we have funding only for this period of time, or do we sort of handle it differently in different situations?
The name of the policy that the Board of Commissioners passed, if the slide could come back up, I think it's called Grant-Funded Positions Policy, and I, my recollection is that it addresses that.
When was that adopted again?
April.
Okay. All right.
So you might, when you do your presentation to the, to the board for...
Right here in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. You might have that policy in there. Might help. So that we, if we asked a question.
I agree. Thanks.
Very good. All right. Thanks, Rachel. That's the last item on the agenda. Are there any other items that Commissioners would like to address before we adjourn, before we have a special meeting at four thirty? All right. We're adjourned, and we'll reconvene at four thirty to go into a closed session prior to our regular five o'clock meeting.